All right, the time is, the time is coming past for to start Tuesday, January 16th, 2018, a regular council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager, Alderman Mozio.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. Oh, okay. Next on our agenda is our invocation. Let us all please stand and welcome Pastor George Manila of Church in Waukegan located at 590-596 South Genesee Street in Waukegan, Illinois. Immediately, immediately following the, uh, the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Sir, please take the, the.
Dear God, precious Lord, we are so thankful to you. You are our Creator, yet you are our Savior. You are the wonderful, marvelous God, and you became a man like one of us. So you understand all our feelings, our emotions, our needs, everything that we go through because you did go through also. We ask you, Lord, that you bless this meeting, everything that's been, is going to be discussed in this meeting, anything that's been brought up with the need of the community, which I ask you to bless them also, Lord. In your precious name, we dedicate this time, guide everyone, be our guidance. Lord, just like with Moses, you asked them to go up to the mountain and walk up to conquer the city, conquer the new city they can. But you, Moses asked you, Lord, if you don't go with us, we are not going up. Lord, it's the same today. We need you, we need your presence, we need your guidance, we need you, and this is the most wonderful thing we ever had, your wonderful presence. Thank you, Lord Jesus, in your precious name, I pray.
Amen. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Manila. Mayor's comments? Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I had the pleasure of attending a couple of events in celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. this weekend. It is always inspiring to remember Dr. King's journey. I want to thank all of the, those individuals in our community who participated in the day of service in Waukegan and throughout Lake County. As the winter, uh, as the winter weather stroked this morning, I want to voice my appreciation for Public Works, the Public Works crew that were out there clearing, uh, clearing snow and salting our city streets. Mr. Hewitt, please let your team know, as always, we appreciate what they do, and also a special thanks out to, uh, to the grounds crew at City Hall. Upcoming events, Art Walk will be this Saturday, January the 20th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. in our downtown, uh, downtown Waukegan. We hope to see everyone there. Three Brothers Theater on Saturday, January the 20th, 7:30 p.m. The Three Brothers Theater will host Ill Theory Collective for a, for a dance concert titled Inspiration. The Genesee Theater, Genesee Theater has some great shows coming on Saturday, January the 20th, State Ballet Theater of Russia, Sleeping Beauty. Thursday, January 25th, Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and R&B Legends, the OJs. Uh, Friday, February the 2nd, Priscilla Presley. Saturday, February the 3rd, Ron White. For tickets and more information, please go to www.geneseetheater.com. And before I ask this gentleman to come up, I also want to send a shout out to Alderman Seager on his speedy recovery. Alderman Seager, uh, he fell and kind of hurt his leg, so he's kind of recovering at home. So everybody, good prayers and thoughts go out to him. Uh, he's still taking calls. If not, feel free to call the mayor's office. We'll, we'll surely get you any service you need in that second morning. Uh, before I wrap up, I want to quickly turn the mic over to one of our local business owners, Mike Hay, uh, for a, an announcement that he has. Mike Hay, there he is. I was looking for you, that tan jacket, man. Go ahead and take the mic over there, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would like to use the opportunity and invite everyone to a grand opening on my new office that will take place next week on Tuesday, uh, January 23rd, 10 o'clock in the morning, uh, which is located 801 South Lincoln Avenue, on corner of Lincoln and H Street. Uh, we acquired a building, um, a little over two years ago in the Cape State. Um, it was built in 1905, uh, and was named the Lincoln Building. For many decades, the building had a history of housing many different businesses, servicing the communities, including pharmacy store, typography, shoemaker, et cetera. When the area began declining, last business left in 1983, and the building remained bordering out for more than 35 years. Our goal is to open, um, all commercial spaces, again, bring businesses back and revitalize the neighborhood. So please join us in celebrate the end of decades of decline and new beginning for the Lincoln Building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and the reason we want to bring him up is that we are, Ms. Larissa from Community Development Block Grant is going to be, uh, starting a, I know Larissa is gonna get, be upset with me because I'm gonna say it, pronounce it wrong, but I'm calling it the beautification program. Larissa, what is the, the correct term for that?
Is she here?
She's not here.
She's not here? All right, good, so she's, we're fine.
Restoration.
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 Yeah, city restoration.
City Restoration Program.
City Restoration.
Thank you, Alderman. Um, and one of the, one part of that is we're gonna be working with some of our business owners, and, and we're gonna see if we can, through the Community Development Block grant funds, um, from, from facade or sidewalk program with some, where the business owners are responsible for that. We're gonna see if we can do like a half and half on some of the sidewalks or facade. And some of the things that we're looking to, to roll out early March, April, with all of our small business owners. Uh, and more importantly, our residents in and throughout the city of Waukegan. Next, we have, all right, item number two, minutes, Mayor's comments, minutes. Motion, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest to approve.
Committee of the whole.
The Committee of the Whole meetings from January 8th, 2018. Any questions to the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's passed and carried. Item B, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May to approve regular meeting minutes from January 22nd, correction, January the 2nd, 2018. Any questions to the motion? All those approve?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item three, audience time. Madam Clerk.
As soon as I get the list.
It's coming, Janet. Janet is coming.
Audience time is three minutes, and if you would really speak into the mic, because we want to make sure that the audience who watches it on Sunday can hear it. First off, Marianne DeRose.
Martina. I thought Haley was gonna go first and explain the situation, because it's her dog, but.
Can you speak up?
Sorry. My name is Martina DeRose, and I live on, at 253 Stanley in Waukegan, and, um, January 2nd, Haley Shuniman's dog, uh, how much does he weigh?
He weighs about 11 pounds.
Okay, about 11 pounds, was attacked, um, by two other dogs being walked on a leash by their owner in the neighborhood, and she can tell you the, the whole story. But it doesn't sound like much was done, or enough was done after the attack, um, with the, the dogs who attacked her dog are still at home. Now, their home is about three doors from me. I dragged my kids out because I was really upset, I was this upset about it. Um, it's nighttime, they'd rather be at home, building forts and hitting each other with pillows and getting ready for bed, but this is so important to me. Those dogs have access to part of our ravine, and I do believe they've been loose, um, a few times already. They're new to the neighborhood, just maybe three or four weeks, but I can't even let my kids go into the ravine to play because I'm worried about, um, what could happen, but, uh, the animal warden for the city, um, knows what those dogs have done, and she can tell you exactly what they did, and what they're capable of, and where they live. And our children don't stand a chance against dogs who've tasted blood already. Um, I just see that as a huge liability, and if the city says, well, we're following ordinance, then I think the ordinance needs to be revised and revisited, and all I ask is when you, um, take the time to think through the ordinance, line by line, and see if any of it needs to be maybe altered, so that, I don't know if the dogs, they're not even muzzled, he's walking them again in the neighborhood. Maybe picture your grandkids or your loved ones out playing, because it's gonna be, um, can I play outside, mom? You know, as soon as it gets warm enough out, and I'm worried. I have 12 and one more on the way, and we do our best to watch our kids, but they do want to ride their bikes up and down the street, and I can't live worrying about dogs three doors away that the city says they're not dangerous. I don't know how they're deemed not dangerous. Her dog's missing an eye. Um, so that's what my concern was tonight.
Thank you. Tim Amarella?
Good evening. My name's Tim Amarella. I'm at 214 Douglas, and I'm here for, uh, support for my neighbors here, much like what Martina was saying, um, the dog that was attacked, and, um, my concern is that I, the, um, whether the ordinance needs looking at, or whether the actions taken need to be reconsidered, but, um, I have six children myself, and regardless of how many I have, uh, the, the children and the citizens in the neighborhood, um, we do need to be protective of them, obviously, and, um, I'm here essentially just to voice additional support for, um, for Haley, who you'll hear from shortly, and, um, the rest of the neighbors and the community at large on this matter. Thank you.
Jonathan Dimaster?
Jonathan Dimaster, 309 Stanley. Uh, I'm also here to support Haley. Uh, we live in the same seventh ward neighborhood, um, and their dog was nearly killed on January 2nd by two dogs, and another neighbor acquired approximately two weeks earlier. The dog was in his backyard with his owner, when the attacking dogs overpowered their owner, moved gravel to return to the fence, and bit the dog, causing a pierced artery in the vein and loss of an eye. The owner of the attacking dogs was allowed to keep the dogs quarantined at his apartment despite having no fence in his rental unit, and as was determined that the small dog provoked the much larger ones. I remind you that these dogs overpowered their owner once. On December 22nd, two dogs that matched the description were walked unleashed behind our yard. Our backyard fence is set two, uh, 10 feet back from the property line. These dogs rushed the fence, causing our dogs to react. If these dogs were to breach the fence, I feared the outcome would be the same as Gus's. I also fear that the city government would consider the victims as the ones that did the provocation. I paid additional homeowner insurance for our dogs. There are other Lake County, there is another Lake County city that has an ordinance requiring $100,000 liability renters or owner of homeowner's insurance if one has a dangerous dog. We need to feel safe. We, my wife and I, no longer walk our dogs in the neighborhoods. We leave town and walk them in, uh, parks away from Waukegan. And just remind, there are plenty of dogs, still plenty of children in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Ralph Peterson? Ralph Peterson? Ralph Peterson? Haley Rojas Shuniman? Now Haley, I know you're gonna do a tag team because you're not sure how long your it is. You have three minutes.
No, I, I might have to do a tag team. Can I first pass out for the mayor and for the aldermen? I just want them to have, I have pictures before and after of Gus, as well as a copy of what I say in case I can't finish, and can I read through it? It may not be enough, but, I mean, just.
Well, Jennifer's gonna finish it for you, if you don't finish it.
Yes, I don't.
For third time, okay. Just speak right into the mic.
Yes. Okay. On Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018, my dog Gus was pulled out, dug out from under the fence in our backyard and brutally attacked by two vicious and dangerous pit bulls. Gus's injuries included, but were not limited to, a severed jugular vein, several lacerations on his neck, multiple puncture wounds across his face and body, a fracture of his C2 vertebra, and a chipped bone on his shoulder blade. Gus also lost his right eye. The graphic and gruesome details of Gus's wounds and our empathy for the suffering he endured have inflicted in myself and my family severe emotional trauma. Perhaps the most upsetting aspect of what happened on that night was actually what happened after the fact, when Waukegan Animal Control found both dogs that attacked Gus to be not dangerous. They came to this conclusion while Gus was still in the hospital in critical condition. This conclusion to Animal Control's investigation has left myself, my family, my neighbors, and an entire community of social media followers puzzled. Um, and when I hand it out to you, I have Chapter Four, Section One of the Waukegan Municipal Code, which I don't have time to say right now. Um, this attack occurred on private property. The stance of Animal Control was that Gus provoked the attack by barking at the passing dogs and running to the fence. However, the Waukegan Municipal Code does not specify or give a definition of provocation. When asked what criteria the Waukegan Animal Control uses to determine whether or not a dog is dangerous, they told us that they, that it, quote, "depends on the situation." Not only is the law unclearly written, but the city officials whose job it is to enforce the code do not even know what the code is. If Waukegan has the stance that barking and running to the fence sign is grounds for provocation, then the city has set up a perfect scenario for this exact incident to occur at the Callahan Franklin Dog Exercise Area at the Larson Nature Reserve on Western Avenue, where the small and large dog sections are separated by nothing but, get this, a poorly constructed fence. My family loves Gus, and we take exceptional care of him. We all take the necessary precautions to keep him safe. It is because of our desire to keep Gus safe that we only let him out in a fenced-in area. We were issued a city permit to build our fence, and it complies with all of the codes and regulations. The city did a final inspection of our fence after it was built, and it did meet all the codes. Um, my grandpa, who's right here, was standing in the backyard with Gus when the two dogs attacked him, and in his attempts to free Gus from the jaws of one dog, he suffered laceration wounds to his hands. Um, in the state of Illinois, any puncture or laceration on the hands that occurs from the teeth of an animal is considered a bite, however, the Waukegan Municipal Code does not specify that. I pose a very important question to you, Mr. Mayor, and to all of the alderpersons in this room, also to the Waukegan Police Department and the wardens and director of Waukegan Animal Control. If and when these and other dogs found to be not dangerous attack again, do you want the blood of the next animal person or child?
Thank you, Haley. Jennifer, are you gonna pick it up?
Yeah, hi, Jennifer Beltrami, 317 Stanley. I am here also, obviously, to support the Shunimans. Um, so, do you want the blood of the next animal, person, or child to be on your hands? Is that the risk you're willing to take? Are you willing to jeopardize the health and safety of the residents of Waukegan? As a resident of the city, I certainly hope that you are not willing to risk this anymore. I have been taught from a very young age that it is my civic duty to speak up for causes that I do believe in. That being said, I believe that some of the most necessary and influential change, influential changes start in your own backyard. This change started in my backyard, and now I'm bringing the issue before all of you. My present proposition to you, Mr. Mayor, the Judiciary Committee, and all of the alderpersons of Waukegan, is to amend Chapter Four of the Municipal Code in order to clarify what is already there and to erase the gray area between dogs that are dangerous and not dangerous, because to say that a dog that has attacked another one is not dangerous implies that said dog is safe. Gus and many others are proof that this is not the case. It is in the best interest of the public that a new ordinance be put into place and be enforced, not only for the safety, but also for the peace of mind of civilians who encounter dogs with a history of aggression in their neighborhoods and communities on a daily basis. I must stress that I am not proposing breed-specific legislation, but I do believe that it is the duty of the legislators of Waukegan to write laws that ensure the safety and welfare of its residents. After all, that is what we elect you to do. This is an issue of protecting the safety and well-being of all residents of the city of Waukegan, both human and animal, and should not be taken lightly. Sincerely, Haley Shuniman. I would also like to add, um, along with Martina, I have small children. My children play with Martina's children on the block. They ride their bikes up and down the block. The thought that a dog that viciously attacked another small dog is not dangerous, I mean, it could have been one of our children. My kids, we foster animals at my house. My kids love dogs. They go up and ask people to pet their dogs all the time. This is scary, just scary, and I, I, I'm with Haley. There needs to be a clear, clear ordinance that can really help protect citizens, their pets, and the children of Waukegan. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther Herr?
Thank you. My name is Esther Herr. I would like to say thank you to Mr. Cunningham and Public Works, because I am a pedestrian, and for the first time in years, I saw the main bus stop in Sheridan Road really clean, and some bus stop really in good condition. But I would like to say also that some places like Glen Flora Plaza, that there is a Rose Marshall, had not been proud, and the bus driver sometimes lowered the bus in order if we felt don't hit so much. And also in, in Belvedere Mall, I think it's important, this bus stop, the big clean also. It's not good to get off in a mountain of snow. I called today twice to Public Works, because I live close to an alley where there are almost 28, 30 cars, and sometimes the, the camions don't come. And I called twice, and the lady was kind and told me that they gave preference to avenues, then to streets, and the last time to, to alleys. When they come to the alley two, three days later, the snow is so hard, slippery, and I, and my suggestion is they supposed to have teams, one team for avenue, one team for street, one team for alleys at the same time. And, um, it's totally slippery. Sometimes I had to crowd the snow in order to walk. Um, and also, well, I would like to say thank you, and now that they mentioned the, the dogs, I remember I have a meeting with Mr. Cunningham mentioning about the dogs without leash, with poo, uh, pudding in the neighbor house. Also, they don't respect the crosswalk for pedestrians, and I remember I told him the best way is to find people. The community in Waukegan needs to be educated, and I think, um, it will increase the revenue for the city, and I think when a person, you touch the pocket of a person, the person obeys. But what happened to them is crazy. Sometimes I tried to cross in Genesee water, and the cars come, doesn't obey the, the white sign, and I think it's important for, to educate the community. Well, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the audience time.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, there was a presentation tonight, uh, by United Way of Lake County, however, I think that, that presentation has been rescheduled, uh, for the first week of Febru, correcting, first council meeting of February. Item five, Finance Committee, Alderman Valco.
Your Honor, according to Alderman Valco, sir, we have a, this finance committee is lengthy and long, and a lot of discussion information. I'd like to make a motion to omnibus, the Finance Committee meeting, a class.
All right, we have a motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman May, uh, to omnibus, um, the agenda on the Finance Committee. Any questions? Before we vote on it, Bob, this corporation council could get explained exactly what that is for the audience and for the listening audience.
Sure, a, uh, an omnibus just means that you're voting on multiple action items all at the same time as a group.
Thank you. Any questions to the motion? All right, Alderman Valco, I think you need to read all of the, do you have to read them all? You have to read them all, and then we vote on the next one. So you just take eight through, what is it, nine, eight through Z?
Eight through Z for crying out loud.
Yeah. Eight through L. Just, yeah.
Eight, yes, wait a second, please.
Eight through L.
I mean, I love you all, but I don't want to be able to do it.
Yeah, it was about an hour and a half meeting.
Yeah, it was.
Thank you for all the aldermen that were here. Um, you want them all read?
Yeah, you can read them all simultaneously, not simultaneously, but, you know. And then we'll vote on them as, once you're finished.
Uh, item A, a motion to approve a three-year renewal with Sebus Direct Document Management for Water and Sewer Bill Printing, Mailing, and E-Bill serves. Pricing estimated at $3,500 per month, excluding postage, but may vary based on volume and other factors. Funding from line item 555-915-924434. Item B, a motion to approve the 2018 Program Year Community Development Block Grant funding allocations for a total of $775,929. Item C, a motion to adopt a resolution establishing the City of Waukegan Community Developmental Block Grant Citizen Participation Plan as presented. Item D, a motion to authorize the proper city officials to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Regional Transportation Authority and the City of Waukegan to add multimodal access improvements to multiple pace routes on the Washington Street Corridor. The total project is $260,880, funded as follows: $13,044 from the RTA, $39,132 from the city, and $208,704 from a U.S. Department of Transportation Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Grant. The city's matching contribution is funded from line item 251-825-124489. Item E, a motion to authorize the proper city officials to execute an amendment to the grant agreement previously approved on December 19th, 2016, with the Department of Natural Resources increasing the Coastal Management Grant from $60,000 to $75,000 to provide funding to continue the Waukegan Waterfront Group. There is no local match for this grant. Item F, a motion to authorize the proper city officials to execute a grant agreement with the Lake County Community Development Block Grant to complete ADA improvements at City Hall and the City Hall to Lake County Courthouse Crossing. The total project is estimated at $45,000, with $20,000 coming from Lake County CDBG and $25,000 from the City of Waukegan's CDBG. Item G, a motion to authorize the purchase of 1701 Circle Court, pin number 0816. zero-eight-one-six-two-zero-two-zero-three-eight, for a hundred-and-three-thousand dollars. And further, to authorize the permanent transfer out of stabilization funds for the said purchase in accordance with the Stabilization Policy Resolution twelve-dash-R-dash-six-seven, Section Roman numeral four, B two. Item H, a motion to affirm a contract with Andres Medical Billing Limited Retroactive to 2001, providing for a third-party emergency medical billing services paid as a percentage share of payments collected through the end of the 2017-dash-18 fiscal year, or until such time, a successor contract may be negotiated by granting a waiver of the bidding process per Section Two, forty-four-fifty-eight, subsection I, subsection five, High Degree of Skill. Item I, a motion to approve an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars for the 2017-18 fiscal year with Air One for uniforms and/or self-contained breathing apparatus, granting a good faith waiver of the bidding process, section two-dash-four-fifty-eight, subsection I, seven, funding from line item one-hundred-dash-three-zero-two-zero-two-five-four-six-nine, or line item one-hundred-dash-three-zero-two-zero-two-four-four-one-two. Item J, a motion to authorize the Building Commissioner to extend the contract to, to April thirtieth, 2018, with Vector LLC, with fees as follows: electrical inspection and plan review, seventy-five dollars; mandatory meeting, site survey, et cetera, seventy-five dollars; phone conversations, thirty-seven fifty; and funding from budget line item one-hundred-dash-two-hundred-one-two-four-four-three-eight. Item K, a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing payment of statutory fire protection district taxes from the TIF funds. And the last item on the list, Item L, a motion to authorize the proper city officials to disburse payments to Warren Waukegan Protection District in compliance with the state statute seventy, ILCS seven-oh-five slash twenty, subsection E as follows: two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents immediately for amounts related to 2015, sixteen, and seventeen; forty thousand dollars, forty thousand six-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and thirty cents on or before December thirty-first, 2018; and twenty thousand three-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents on or before December thirty-first, 2019, funding from line item two-six-four-dash-one-two-six-four-two-four-five-nine-six. And that's all I have, sir.
Take a drink of water.
I'm gonna take one, I need more.
Uh, there is a motion on the floor. Any questions to the motion regarding Finance Committee, Items A through L? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Do we need to do the omnibus for Public Works too, or no?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
We have seven items.
Our motion omnibus Public Works also.
Yeah, motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman May, uh, to do omnibus, uh, for all Public Works Committee items. These items will be read into the record by the Chairman, Alderman Newsom. Alderman Newsom?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve purchasing authority in excess of twenty thousand dollars with Covanta Environmental Services formally advance waste by granting a good faith waiver per section two-dash-four-eight-four-five-eight, subsection I, subsection seven, for Liche pumping at the Adelphi landfill for an estimated amount of approximately thirty-five thousand dollars. Funds charged to line item five-five-five-nine-one-six-zero-two-four-five-zero-five. Item B, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve purchasing authority in excess of twenty thousand dollars for certified fleet services incorporated, for inspections of the hydraulic lifts for the boom trucks, for an estimated amount of approximately twenty-six-thousand, without the need for formal bid due to the nature of the services provided per section two-dash-four-five-eight, subsection I, subsection four, professional services due to the certification and licensing required. Funds charged to line item one-hundred-nine-one-zero-five-two-five-four-seven-four. Item C, motion to authorize the proper city officials to ratify a contract with Mississippi Valley Pump and to formally waive the bidding process. This contract was entered into using surplus funds located within TIF number six shortly before the TIF was scheduled to close, and will purchase a Duplex Control Panel, which will be used to better manage the wastewater control system within the TIF district. The vendor has provided similar proprietary systems to the city in connection with its overall SCADA system, and the purchase unit will integrate with the existing systems, justifying waiving the bidding process. Payment will be made from line item two-three-nine-one-two-three-nine-two-six-four-nine-two. Item D, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve a change order for McDonnell Mechanical Services of Waukegan, Illinois, in, in a not-to-exceed amount of seventy-three-thousand dollars. On December eighteenth, 2017, council approved a not-to-exceed amount of seventy thousand due to an emergency repair, uh, section two-dash-four-five-eight, uh, subsection I, subsection two, at the Public Works facility, a change order is needed for an additional three thousand dollars. Funds currently charged to multiple line items. Item E, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve purchasing authority in excess of twenty thousand dollars with Burris equipment by granting a good faith waiver per section two-dash-four-five-eight, subsection I, subsection seven, with the purchase of used equipment, vehicle parts for maintenance, and rentals of city, rentals, the city's total is forty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and forty-six cent year-to-date. It is estimated that the approximate total of sixty thousand will be spent with Burris equipment, as there are multiple departments that use Burris equipment as a vendor. Funds are currently charged to multiple line items. Item F, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve purchasing authority in excess of twenty thousand dollars with Tredoc Tire Service by granting a good faith waiver per section two-dash-four-five-eight, subsection I, subsection seven. The city's total is twenty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and seventy-seven cent year-to-date. It is estimated that the approximate total of thirty-eight thousand will be spent with Tredoc Tire Service, as there are multiple departments that use Tredoc Tire Service as a vendor. Funds are currently charged to multiple line items. Item G, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve person, purchasing authority in excess of twenty thousand dollars with Lakeland Larson Elevator Corp. by granting a good faith waiver per section two-dash-four-five-eight, subsection I, subsection seven. The city's year-to-date total is twenty thousand three hundred dollars and seventy cent, and it is estimated that the approximate amount of twenty-five thousand may be spent, as there are multiple departments that use this vendor. Funds are currently charged to multiple line items, and I so move.
All right, there we go. Um, there's a motion on the floor, uh, for Public Works Committee, Items A through G. Are there any questions to the motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item seven, Special Judiciary Committee, Alderman May.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first item is a motion to approve an ordinance establishing a custodian of records and amending the fees and reimbursements for the Freedom of Information Act requests, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Items B and C were tabled, Mayor and Committee. Um, Item D, a, a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease with Cole Children's Museum, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman C- Villalobo, correction, I'm sorry, Alderman Tempest. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Uh, Special Public Safety Committee, Alderman Moseo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, motion authorize the proper city officials to waive the bidding process and accept the Havy Communications Co. equipment outfit six, two thousand eighteen, for intercepted police squad car for a total price not to exceed sixty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty cents. Payment for this equipment will be made from line item one-hundred, sixty-seven-five-two-six-four-ninety-three, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Villalobos. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Thank you. Item B, motion accept the low bid from McDonnell Mechanical for the replacement of the M-U-A-U A dollar of the Police Department, should be arranged for fifty thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The Police Department also requests a five thousand dollar overage contingency for a total not to exceed fifty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Payment for the renovation will be made from line item three-zero-seven-one-three-zero-seven-two-six-three-nine-two. The project shall be managed by RRP Inc., architects for a fee not to exceed six thousand six hundred dollars. The project management fee will be also paid from line item three-zero-seven-one-three-zero-seven-two-six-three-nine-two, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Taylor. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
And Item C, motion approve orders that would allow for the first four parking permits for any property or tenant or person owning, operating, and business in the downtown district and desire to park in lots B or D, be provided free of charge. We made an amendment to that. Uh, Corporation Counsel is gonna clean that up. It was not, Alderman Valco helping with that. We did not, wasn't tenants, it was property owners or business owners, correct? Is that how we?
Property and business owners for the four.
Yes.
And a tenant up to four. Because if you're a tenant in an apartment by yourself, you sure don't need four permits.
Correct. So we're gonna correct the language on that, so, so I'll make that motion as amended, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Villalobo, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Uh, okay, motion's passed and carried. Reports and communication? Uh, motion by Alderman Valco Villalobo, second by Alderman Tempest, to accept and place on file the monthly tourism report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve vendor payments dated January sixteenth, 2018, in a total amount of one million six hundred and sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and eighty cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve revenue payroll dated January fifth, 2018, in a total amount of one million five hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and four cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Moseo, uh, to approve final cash, cash-out payroll dated January fifth, 2018, in total amount of three thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-two cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Villalobo, second by Alderman Newsom, uh, to, to approve all raffle sales. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Uh, Item E, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve outdoor special events. Sponsor has applied under the directive of non-city government use of city-owned buildings and venues. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. There being no ordinances, um, item number twelve, thirteen, Alderman's time. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moseo.
Uh, sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, we did labor relations earlier today, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
And...
But those, yeah, but those, those items, no, no action for council, no, yeah. That was just to inform the labor relations and get approval per underfunds.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
For traveling out, outside the, uh, the city of, state of Illinois.
Right.
But thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks for clarifying.
And good catch, Alderman Valco, on that, the, the tenant for the downtown parking. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moseo.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna give my heartfelt feelings to the Shunamans. I know them personally, and, um, I don't know if people know how I feel about dogs. My people at home think I love the dog more than I like them. On some days, that's probably true. A house of four women will do that to somebody, but, uh, with that being said, um, two Corporation Councils ago, we had them redo the whole ordinance, um, and I don't wanna obviously step on Alderman May's toes, 'cause her, her ward, but I, I definitely wanna look into this. I mean, it's just a tra- I, I can't, I didn't, I didn't wanna look at the picture, I'd get too upset about it, so, um, but my condolences go to them, um, but we have to try to find a better solution or situation, um, for that, uh, because that's, anybody that has a dog and loves a dog knows that's, that's just not a good situation to, uh, try to go through. So I'll be talking to Shunamans and to our Animal Control and our chief and anybody else and try to see if we can't come to a, something on this. I, I don't know, I, I don't really know where to go with it otherwise, and I just, I'm just heartbroken about it. That's all, thank you.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd like to kinda piggyback on Alderman Moseo's sentiments about a dog attack. Um, he didn't look at the photos, I did. Um, they are rather, I'm gonna use the word graphic, um, there's an image there where it's, um, it almost makes you wanna cry, seeing what the dog was inflicted upon, what was inflicted upon that dog. Um, so I think this is definitely something we should address, um, as a municipality, and I'll just leave it at that for, for that. Couple of things I wanna, uh, mention, um, that kind of didn't really get spoken today because we omnibussed it, because we had so much going on. Uh, one of them was the passing of the approval of, receiving the grant funds for the Washington Street Corridor, uh, project. Um, I'm excited about that, that a big portion of that project will be in the fourth ward. Um, this stems from work done, uh, in the previous administration, uh, to bring about the Chicago Metropolitan, Metropolitan Agency for Planning did a corridor study of Washington Streets back in two thousand thirteen, and this is part of the process of getting those, that, with the recommendations, were, to get these recommendations, uh, done and accomplished.[1757.12] So we'll be looking forward to a little bit better crosswalks, signage, couple of bus shelters, particularly, I believe, in the grant writing, the grant, some of the ones specifically I could note it were by the Waukegan High School on Washington and Jackson there for the students, and another bus shelter a little bit east near Lilac Ledge, which is by Washington and Glen Rock for the seniors that live in that area. So I'm excited to see this happen. I do also wanna make notes that one of the key catalysts for this was Town Square Consultant, who was hired on in the previous administration as a contract for a small, for a duration of time. I worked with the individuals from Town Square Consultant and thought they did a wonderful job in bringing everything forward and working with the business owners in that corridor. And I think of, I think it could be something for us to look into, Mayor, to talk with them and see about maybe bringing them back on board. They have a lot of the history and knowledge of this project, and again, they were, I believe, one of the catalysts for this. Second, or third, the downtown parking, the free parking for the four, I think is another good start moving forward. If anyone asks me about downtown parking, I would say the term I would use is inequitable. Downtown parking in Waukegan is one of the most barriers, one of the biggest barriers, I think, in our downtown, quite honestly. The parking meters, the lack of usage of our parking lots. So to incentivize individuals to use our parking lots more, I think is a great thing. I know some of the business owners would really, they're gonna really appreciate the free parking there. And this is, to me, this is just a step forward that's been needed for a long time. If I had my druthers, I would make it that there was just free parking in downtown Waukegan on the streets, or something along those lines. I don't like the meters quite personally, is where I'm getting at. And we need to utilize our parking lots. We have so much surface there, that's being, there's no cars there, and there's parking for about, I believe, 400 vehicles approximately. So, and downtown parking has been an issue for a long time standing, but I'm glad to see that we're moving something forward on the dial on this. So I'm happy to see that happen. And finally, I will close with a event coming up tomorrow, Waukegan College. For those of you who are not aware of the organization, they are an organization here in Waukegan that helps first-generation students get on the path to college, get into college and graduate college. They've even gone one step further to create these mentorships of college students being peer mentors to incoming freshman college students out of the program, which I think is a wonderful idea because personally, I was a first-generation college worker in my family, and my immediate family was the first one to go to university, and my extended family on both sides, I'm like the fifth or sixth person, so not a lot of college-bound people in my family, and there was a lot of questions that I could've had help with if I knew where to turn, so I really like that they're doing that. So they're doing this event tomorrow night at, say, fundraiser, so they're just inviting people to come and get to know what Waukegan College is about. It's gonna be tomorrow evening from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. at Zoom Beer, which is located at 3232 West Monroe Avenue. So I invite anyone in the audience that they wanna find out more about Waukegan College to come to that. Those listening on the television, you'll miss it, but still look into Waukegan College. And that is all I have for tonight, so thank you all for being there, thanks.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Yes.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I just wanna also express my sentiments, my sympathy to the Schunyman family. I've been in discussions with the neighborhood since the attack happened early in January, and we've, I've already been in discussions with Corporation Council, Bob Long and Mr. Dorondo about this situation, and Chapter IV is definitely on our list for the next Judiciary Committee meeting, so we're on it. And I just wanna express my admiration for Jamie Schunyman. It's scary to come up here and address City Council, especially when you're so upset, and she did a great job, and she got her whole neighborhood out here, so good for her. I just wanted to make a quick comment about, Mr. Quinn made some observations during our meetings tonight about our purchasing policies and the $20,000, and you know, we're kind of cleaning up some things on the books. I just think that the City Council, and I know the mayor's talked about this before with our finance director, but if there's anything that points to a need for a central purchasing department in the city and policies surrounding that, this is it. So I hope that we can continue to work towards that. I know that involves personnel, but I know that's something a lot of us wanna work towards. So, Mr. Quinn, thanks for pointing that out. We are aware of that issue, and I know there's a lot of people in the city that wanna work toward a more transparent and better way to make purchases. You know, that also puts us in a better financial position when we're all purchasing together. And we approved an application for an outdoor special event for a pretty darn big music festival this summer, so kudos to David Moly, who I know is working on this behind the scenes, and good luck as he moves forward. And that's all I have, thanks.
Alderman Velco.
So I'm sitting in my home, in my office, and my wife is downstairs yelling at me, "Hey, Waukegan's on television again." Okay, after about three minutes, she comes upstairs, "Did you hear me? Waukegan was on television." What happened? She says nothing. The TV crew was out there downtown at the lakefront and some of the streets and everything, and we're saying how a wonderful job the city looks that the Public Works is doing during the snow. So I know all of us up here have said in the past how once you pass Green Bay Road coming eastbound, whether it's Belvidere, Washington, or Grand Avenue, you can really see the difference. But it's nice to know that it's on television now, that Waukegan's got one hell of a Public Works department. So Michael, thank you, and the rest of your men, sir, for what they did, put us on, not the map, but put it, let everybody know how well you guys do there. My congratulations, sir.
As many of you know, I am a dog owner, now only three dogs, I just lost my fourth one. This just greatly upsets me. I know how hard our animal control works, and I know that there has to be a reason for them not to see this as a vicious dog, so I'm assuming that they're looking at the ordinances that we have, and we're not supporting them. This city is one of the kindest cities to animals, and we're one of the cruelest. If you saw some of the things that they see, I can't believe people could treat an animal that way. What I will say is if a small dog barking is what provokes an attack, then I will tell you from personal experience of having four dogs under 18 pounds, they're yappy. That's what small dogs do. That should not provoke an attack. And I'm sorry, but you don't have $8,000 worth of vet bills for something that isn't a severe attack. So we need to strongly look at this and really consider how we're gonna handle this as a city, because it's not acceptable, both the fact that it hurt another dog, but the fact that this could've been a child. So I guarantee you, this council is very concerned about it.
Yes.
And I know this mayor is. I also wanna take some time to thank the mayor for going through all this and cleaning up our books, and I know these meetings have been long lately, but honestly, it's stuff that needs to be done, and I just wanna thank the mayor for taking the time to do it, and most of all, to our staff. I know you guys are working tons of hours with so many things, and especially with all the snow and all the departments being busy as it is to add all this stuff on top of it, so I sincerely wanna thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
I'd like to congratulate our mayor for receiving the Martin Luther King's Dreamers Award. He was one of the recipients yesterday. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I wanna encourage everyone to come out on the 23rd, which is next Tuesday, to our grand opening on 8th and Lincoln. Mickey, and congratulations for encouraging entrepreneurship in the first ward. And I too wanna express words of appreciation to Public Works, and not only Public Works, our fire department, and our fire department. I think they deserve a round of applause for what they do. Anytime you meet them, they're on their game. Thank you.
That concludes.
That concludes. You know, the, we talked about the cleanup of a lot of things. I wanna give a huge attaboy or kudos to our Corporation Council, his firm, but how receptive our department heads, and more importantly, our department head staff in wanting, wanting to clean and do the things that we need to do to be more efficient and effective. So, Bob, to you and your team, to the department heads, you and your team, thank you very much for being receptive to all of these new and different ways of moving our community forward. With that being said, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Taylor, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Thank you, everybody.